Good evening. I'll call to order committee of the whole for Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Please let the record show that all aldermen are present. We haven't seen each other for like three weeks, so.
Yeah.
We're all, we're all excited.
There's the team match.
Uh, tonight we've got on our agenda PL one nineteen dash twenty-two by Alden McCannis to authorize the forgiveness of the Oleane City property tax bill for tax map ninety-four dot zero six five dash seven dash three eight, one twenty-seven Mary Street South, pantry Prescott County treasurer, exclude the associated bill from uh the amount when remitting funds to make the city hold unpaid twenty-two city taxes. So, uh, we received a memo from uh a city attorney uh on this matter. I believe this property is working with Senator Guerilla's office on that. Is that Alden McCannis? Is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure where it wrapped up, but I'm ready to pull it off the agenda and be done with it.
Okay. Um, would you like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely?
Yep.
I'll second that. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carried. Um, we've got PL one twenty-one dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to approve the following boost business grant program, BBGP, real estate assistance application for financial assistance as recommended by the boost business grant program coordinator, uh, I'm sorry, committee, BBGP forty-three dash twenty-two in the amount not to exceed three thousand thirty-seven and ninety-two cents, and to au- authorize the transfer of funds from capital fund two seventeen to capital fund two eighteen for the costs associated with the said grant award. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, applicant number one, a mortgage assistance for the business consolidation operations located on North Second Street. So that will be the, that's the uh, the applicant. And then, uh, we want to, we have three thousand thirty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents left in the account. We want to transfer that and we put out a, uh, January sixth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, for, uh, bulk to market and real estate assistance to exhaust the remaining funds.
Do you have any idea? I've been asked by a couple of different businesses, mayor, uh, do we have an idea how much is left in each of those programs?
Uh, that, that's what we will have left.
Oh, that's it?
That's it. Three thousand. So we wanted, uh, we're gonna, we put out in the press release that that's what we had, and if somebody could use that amount, we'll use that amount.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, it's been a very successful program.
Awesome.
Uh, so I appreciate the council's, uh, willingness to form that and get it going. And John, you were the brains behind it, and, uh, you know, Carrie Kirk went out and put things together.
She did the work, she did the work.
And, uh, so it's been a good program. We're hearing nothing but positive, uh, comments about it. So I thank the council for the foresight to, uh, to develop that, uh, those two programs.
And, and, and Mr. Mayor, you know, as a, to kind of piggyback off that, um, the wonderful work over there, uh, with, uh, the lane accelerator and the success of that program over there, um, you know, as you and I were talking, uh, you indicated maybe an opportunity for the city to collaborate with the lane accelerator, uh, some point in the future. Again, just trying to keep pushing our business culture here.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna meet with them after the first of the year.
Awesome.
And, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can put together and I'll bring it back to the council.
Awesome. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
Ask sponsor.
All right. Sponsor is made by Alderman McCall. Uh, entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman, uh, Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh.
I'm gonna just, although I'm no longer affiliated with the small business development program, I'm, I'm gonna just, uh, keep it on, uh, uh, what do I wanna say? Consistent so I'm not staying for my previous relationship with, uh, the SPPC. Uh, okay, so that motion passes and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Uh, PL one twenty-two dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Oleane and the state of New York in connection with the accelerated transit capital funds for the Oleane area transit system. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I have some notes here from the community development on this ACT, which is accelerated transfer capital, uh, capital. Uh, funding will be used to displace the, the local share in the amount of sixty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-four related to the, uh, pending twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three section five, five-three-one-one application for the replacement of three buses, which are past due their useful life of ten years for two hundred thousand service miles. Uh, the project cost is sixty-seven, six hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-six, the local share is sixty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-four, replacing one two thousand sixteen bus, one two thousand seventeen bus, and one twenty-twenty bus.
Hmm. So, uh, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, so we get six hundred thousand and it costs us sixty-five thousand?
Yes, and now that, those funds will come out of reserve funds that are in that, in the, uh, the, uh, that, that program.
Yep. Makes sense. Awesome. Um, any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
Ask sponsor.
Sponsor is made by, you're gonna get it there, Dave. You're gonna get it there. All right, uh, Alderman Witt, you can second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carried and that is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next, we have PL one twenty-three dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the purchase of a vehicle for use by the city of Oleane HVAC specialists in accordance with section two dash two thirty-one, subparagraph two of the city of Oleane code ordinances for procurement policy and to authorize the transfer of funds associated with said purchase. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, because of our, our procurement policy, uh, there's no mention, you know, in, in the policy or in the state biz of used vehicles. So, we, uh, we have to come to the council and get the, the council's, uh, authority to purchase, uh, the vehicle. Uh, so it's, it's, uh, uh, because of our, the, our, our, our procurement policy says we have to go to bid, uh, for anything over, uh, thirty, thirty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty thousand. So what we're doing is asking the council to consider this, uh, authorizing us to make the purchase, uh, which we will take, uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars of, uh, of, uh, the, uh, each fund, the general fund, a water fund, and the sewer fund. And we're asking for up to because, uh, uh, we've missed an opportunity with a couple of vehicles. So Mark is searching for vehicles and we won't spend over, over forty-five thousand dollars per vehicle.
Okay.
So, so there's not a vehicle in mind? We're gonna go look for a used vehicle?
Yeah, we, we've had some, uh, we've had, uh, we've been looking, uh, we've had some prices on it. Mark wants to confirm some of them and we'll, we'll get a used vehicle, yes.
Uh, can you, I know you've discussed this in fleet, uh, could you give an idea of what type of vehicle, um?
It'll be a van.
Commercial utility van.
Commercial van. It, uh, could be, uh, I guess, uh, I'm not sure what the vehicle, the higher vans or something like that, or just a straight van.
Transit?
Uh.
Transit.
Transit, yeah. So, and we'll, uh, we'll get that. And, uh, and, uh, the vehicle will be marked, city of Oleane, uh, and we won't have to pay mileage anymore to Kevin for using his own vehicle. For each, we'll be able to, uh, start taking tools in and out, be able to keep tools in the van, and, uh, we'll have that.
And then it would be locked up and just stay where you, just like?
Yeah, we locked up out in the back lot here or at the city garage. And, uh, we're, we're up to, uh, we're up to almost, uh, eighteen months to two years and now on new vehicles is what Mark reported at the last fleet meeting.
Um, okay. Just a quick question. Uh, I know we had talked before, mayor, about ordering at the council. You guys came to us about putting in an order for some vehicles.
Yes.
Um, and we weren't sure whether or not they got in in time. Did, do we have any update there?
We did get in the queue.
Okay.
Okay. And also, uh, Alderman Robinson has given us some suggestions and Mark is looking into those now also, so.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay. Um, any comments or questions on this? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
Ask sponsor.
Alderman Anastasia. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Alderman Witt's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. That too is referred to tonight's regular meeting. PL one twenty-four dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Raymond E. Kelly Incorporated for the construction of a facade pedestrian single passage safety tunnel in accordance with section two dash two thirty-one, subparagraph two of the city of Oleane code ordinances and to authorize the transfer of six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from the general fund contingency to line item three six two zero dot four five for costs associated with said construction agreement. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we have Ryan Reed here, our co-forestry officer. Uh, he will, uh, give us the lowdown on this, but it's, it's got to a, I believe, it's come to a critical stage now of this, uh, however, facade on the building down, including this, this farther out now, and, uh, we, we had to make a determination to, uh, to get this done. Uh, and, uh, we talked to Jack Hart and we, we're, we're doing this basically as an emergency and, uh, Harry Kelly will be here next week, uh, to get this taken care of, uh, before it falls down. And, uh, as you know, we put up no, uh, no, uh, no pedestrian signs and they ignore it. Yeah, so we gotta make it safe. Ryan, I think, uh, still, uh, you found it, I'm sorry?
Mr. Reed?
No, you got it. Nailed it.
Just, uh, for our sake, this is the, what location is this? Associate, that we can associate with?
Four fifty-seven Ortegale Street.
It used to be?
And, and also note that a lien will be put on the property, so we will get the, uh, the money back.
I was gonna ask, last I knew, this went up to county, I think it took a tax auction or something. Does somebody own it?
There's been two owners since the tax auction. Individual that bought it and it's transferred to another individual, but there isn't open permit. And if we move forward legal, either way, it's gotta be secured until we can run its course.
Okay. All right. Are there any, no? Alderman?
Uh, yeah, when exactly are we taking off?
We're not taking anything off, but we're doing this, putting up scaffolding, tumbling, basically like what you see in larger cities toward the sidewalk.
Just to replace the sawhogs.
Just so you could?
Yeah.
So you can walk through, you know, if it's the bricks, uh, it'll be, uh, such that if the bricks do come down, it, uh, protect anybody walking through there.
Yeah, I see on the side there's some loose bricks.
Yeah, it's, it's, the facade is, I don't keep a watch on it and, uh, with my calibrated eyeball, it looks, it's coming out more, so.
You know, you might wanna reach out to Paul Patrissi. I think he's trying to get rid of his big metal beams holding up that Jojo's building. They might, they might be able, they might be able to put those big metal beams up. I mean, I don't, I, I was trying to get rid of them, but I'm actually not being funny. So.
But it is kinda funny anyway.
But that's what they're for, right?
Oh, yeah, no, you're right.
Hold up the walls.
Hold up the walls. Anyways, uh, any questions for Mr. Reed? All right.
Uh, wait a minute, I, I do have a question, I'm sorry. Who, who owns the building again, you said? Did we name a, a person?
It is a gentleman out of Lackawanna.
Okay. So, we're gonna pay for this, put this up, and it's gonna be up indefinitely while he gets around to fixing it? Or it goes back to taxes and, like, I, I guess, what's the plan?
The plan is to either have him move forward with a permit that's currently open. He did start on the rear of the property and fix that up, secure that, see if he secures the front. If he doesn't secure the front, then we're gonna have to move to prosecution. So if we move to prosecution, we're still talking months out.
This thing's gonna be up for a while.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, it's, yeah, okay.
Do we have, uh, do we have a process to, like, monitor this and if it goes back up for tax auction for us to get a hold of this property and maybe demo it? If that's what it comes to?
That's a good question.
Uh, we would have to check with the legislator. Last I knew, the legislator was introducing, um, or was in the process of voting on what's called Article nineteen C, which there's already an Article nineteen A. Nineteen A says we can foreclose on residential houses. If they approve nineteen C, nineteen C says that we can foreclose on commercial properties that is the City of Oleane.
That's gotta be passed by the county?
That has to be, it's New York state.
New York state?
Yeah.
And that, and that's currently being worked on?
Correct.
Okay.
Last I knew, it passed both and it was waiting for a local signature.
All right. It's not at the point, I'm just, conversation say, it's not at the point where I know, uh, with some properties, the fire chief is able to deem something a danger and demolish it.
And that's essentially what we're doing right now, but instead of spending thirty-five thousand, we're spending sixty-four hundred.
Fair enough. Okay. Any other comments? I'll entertain a sponsor.
Sponsor.
Yeah. Yeah?
All right.
Paul's formalities have just, like, this guy checked out.
Hey, I'm still cool.
All right, so, uh, we'll give Alderman Witt the go-ahead and, uh, Mr. Yow, is the second. All right. Uh, so that, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried and that too is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next up, we've got, uh, PL one twenty-five dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio to authorize a transfer of five thousand dollars from general fund contingency to line item three-six-two-zero dot four-five-five safety inspection miscellaneous fees for services. Mr. Mayor? This would be the fire chief.
Uh, good evening, everybody. So back in June, I should have listened today, or actually go back to the budget here. Uh, we originally had eleven thousand miscellaneous fees for service. We were more complaint-driven as far as codes go. Remember, we ended up hiring a second code enforcement officer on, which switched us more from complaint-driven to now proactive. Uh, we currently have seventy-five dollars left in that account. There's not a whole lot of snow, so we're getting grass, or not grass, but, um, sorry, uh, debris, garbage complaints. So this is to get us through. Right now, where we stand, outside of the assessed lien here for four fifty-seven, uh, we're between seventeen thousand and eighteen thousand liens. So this is to kinda get us through until we get reimbursed in the springtime for our liens that we've put out. But this'll get us, this, uh, both code supervisor and Ryan felt this'll get us through, um, to this point, so we can still continue to be proactive in cleaning things up.
Um, I think you guys have done a great job, chief. So spend the money, uh, you know, take care of the complaints, uh, and, and it's helped us out, Mr. Alderman, I think tremendously. Um, so, yeah, I, I don't see any problem with this. Any other comments?
Ask sponsor.
Damn. I just wanna say, yeah.
Oh. All right, yeah, I don't think there needs to be much discussion, but I do distinctly recall Alderman Anastasia, uh, essentially begging you guys if you wanted more money, like, can we give you a hundred thousand extra or something, uh, towards miscellaneous fees for service? So Alderman Anastasia with the motion, uh, and I believe Alderman McCall with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Well, you wanna keep your neighbors clean, right?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Anastasia. That's what I, yes. All right, so that, uh, any opposed? And that's referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next up, we've got PL one twenty-six dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio to repeal and replace the City of Oleane Code Of Ordinances, Chapter six, Articles one and two, to establish a local government code enforcement program. Huh. Mr. Mayor? This would be the chief.
I'm gonna pass it for the expert here, but this is a requirement, uh, this is thirty-four, thirty-five pages of, we're sent out, but, uh, Ryan can't boot to the intricacies of why this is required.
Okay.
So in Chapter six, Articles one and Article two are based on New York state law. New York state law comes out with the code enforcement, um, program that has to be adopted by each municipality. New York state has decided to change their code enforcement law. Um, no huge changes, they're basically adding in virtual inspections, um, due to COVID, and that will now be the precedence going forward, that we're legally allowed to do that. Operating permits, um, and then parking garages, which doesn't apply to us. But because New York state has changed theirs, repeal and replace theirs, that means we have to repeal and replace ours by December thirtieth. If we don't, we can now honor a course of code enforcement.
All right, so, um, any comments or questions, first of all, for Mr. Reed?
Uh, just one. I thought when I first noticed this on the agenda, either here or in the, uh, in the agenda for the regular meeting, there was something about an energy, some kind of New York state energy business, and I don't see it here. Can you let, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's gonna, they, it basically just, it points back to the energy code, that we have to enforce the energy code. That's a separate thing from the building code. Chapter twelve, um, of Title nineteen of New York state says this is the building code. Chapter fourteen, don't quote me on that, says this is the energy code. And then this law will point back to all those, that yes, we will enforce not only the building code, but the energy code as well.
Have we done that before or what kind of things are in that code?
Energy code, yes, we've enforced it since two thousand, uh, twelve is when that came into play. And that basically applies to new builds. That's your insulation, your door door testing, doesn't meet certain energy thresholds, your penetration values for your windows, stuff like that. It's stuff that honestly, we really don't see normally in New York because we don't have that many new builds.
Although I will say, uh, Mr. Reed is, uh, one of the contractors, uh, biggest, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the right word would be, uh, paintings, I guess, uh, because we, we had a new addition put on and, like, I'm assuming per the new energy codes, like, you've gotta have the top level insulation installed and all this type of stuff, so, like, the room we had put on and Ryan would come and, you know, inspect all that. Like, it's our most energy effi-, energy efficient room by far, right? Um, that thing holds heat like none others, so we all just sit in one room. Anyways, and it's a bathroom. So, you know that. Anyways, um, so, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good point, so that is fairly recent. Now, just for this purpose, Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong, but we passed this tonight in, in this, in committee of whole and then it's published? Or we?
Yes, the resolution will be published, the title with instructions to contact the city building for the full language, since we don't wanna publish the entire thirty-page document. And then it would be on the agenda on twenty-seventh.
Okay, so, all right, so we pass it tonight out of committee of the whole. Um, and so I guess what I, I wanted to make sure is that it gets published and then we would vote on it in the, at the regular meeting on December twenty-seventh. Uh, Mr. Reed, could you give, uh, maybe give us some bullet point? Some high-level bullet points of any material changes between what we currently have versus this thirty-seven page document? I've read through it, but it, it's left to me.
Right, so, like I said, the virtual inspections, they, they added that in there. As far as the building side goes, besides the virtual inspections, they've expanded what's required in stamp plans for any house over fifteen hundred square feet. Um, operating permits went from eight to thirteen, so, like, before, if you were gonna have a bonfire, you had to have an operating permit, uh, assemblies and thing over a hundred requires that. Now there's a couple hazardous, um, operations that require operating permits. And then the big thing was parking garages, but like I said, that's in there, just in case we ever do get one. I don't think we ever will, but that is in there as well.
That's right. We're getting scaffolding on, on.
Well, if we get a parking garage, you still have, what?
Forty years.
Forty years before you have to inspect it, so if we get one tomorrow, this will still take forty years.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I haven't done anything yet, so I'll, I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Panis, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, uh, so that one is approved and is referred to the meeting, regular meeting Tuesday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Panis, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And we are adjourned. We will jump regular to, uh, for our regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the attendant to hold?
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
President Crawford?
Here. Please, thank you, sir. Please rise for the invitation and the pledge.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Please correcting approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
Regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council is held on Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two at six oh five PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis, Gonzalez, McCall, Anastasia, and Robinson. None raps.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Communications boards and unpermitted council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
Well, thank you. I, uh, I have a notice of disapproval of local law number O two, twenty twenty-two, presented to the city clerk per the instructions from the local law, uh, on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And as soon as Frank is passing them out, I'll have it read into the record.
Notice of disapproval, local law O two dash two thousand twenty-two, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. On October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the Oleane Common Council during the regular meeting approved to enact a local law establishing a civilian review board. I consider this decision and action by the common council to be a mistake and have decided in accordance with New York state municipal home rule law, section twenty-one, to return this law to the common council as disapproved. In accordance with the law, the common council may reconsider this law within thirty days after receiving this notice. If the same is then passed by a concurring vote of two-thirds of all the members of the common council then in office, it shall have full force and effect. But if not so passed by such concurring vote of two-thirds of the members of the common council then in office, such act, so disapproved by the mayor, shall have no force or effect. I have taken this action because during this process, many Oleane residents felt comfortable coming directly to me to voice their opinions about the civilian review board. They knew that I would listen to their concerns objectively. I gathered from these discussions that local citizens want members of the Oleane Police Department to have the ability to make split-second decisions without the threat of being second-guessed by civilians. One of the stated objectives of local law O two dash two thousand twenty-two was to add transparency to the Oleane Police Department. Transparency is not an issue in modern law enforcement. Every interaction that an Oleane police officer has with the public is monitored by a body camera and can be reviewed by a supervisor when necessary. As leaders of the City of Oleane, safety of our residents is our primary objective. The common council sent a message to our police officers by passing this law, the consequences of which have affected morale in the department and is leading to resignations. Ultimately, this legislation will have a detrimental influence on the safety of our residents. Although at first I agreed with the idea of a civilian review board, I have changed my opinion. After the way this has all played out, it has become punitive in nature rather than supportive. I would support a policy advisory committee that would work with the police department in a consultative capacity as advocates for the community. Respectfully, respectfully submitted, William J. Alio, Mayor.
Okay.
So according to the rules of, uh, of local law, this is presented to you. Uh, you have thirty days to, to respond.
Uh, so per the municipal home rule law, uh, that does not include any action tonight. Uh, the earliest action is, uh, within the next, uh, regular meeting. Uh, so, yes, within thirty days, the council, um, can respond to this veto. And require a two-thirds majority.
I thought the two-thirds majority was also, um, if there was two-thirds majority, then the veto or the, whatever you wanna call it here, the, uh, what is it? This notice of disapproval?
Yes.
Was not an option if, if the common, if the elected members of the common council voted unanimously on a, on a local law, that you, you couldn't veto it, basically. That was, I mean, I've been here ten years and that, that's pretty much been my understanding. Has that been a lie this entire time?
The, no, no, I mean, there's been, uh, you know, there's been, uh, passion-taking that, uh, you know, that the mayor, under the charter, can veto anything, okay, any action by the council, okay? And the local law has a specific, uh, criteria in it for how you handle the, the notice of disapproval. So whether it's, whether it's, uh, unanimous or not, it still gives the mayor the right to, uh, and action taken by the council, whatever action to veto, and in local laws, a notice of, of disapproval.
Aye, if Jack were here, I would ask for some clarification to your question, Paul. I, if Jack were here, I would ask for some clarification to your question at all.
Also, it says received November twenty third, but we, now it's passed on to the common council a month later, almost.
As it says that it has to be presented to the county, it's presented within thirty days to the city clerk and it has to be presented to the council at the next, uh, at the next council meeting.
Right. And that's where the then in office part of the common council, uh, comes in.
Yeah, we didn't have a meeting on the fifth Tuesday of November. We didn't have a work session, which it could, it could not be presented at the work session, but we didn't have a work session, so this is the first common council meeting since it was presented to the city clerk.
Um, Alderman McCall?
So I do have a question because it says may reconsider this law within thirty days after receiving, so that means within, like, within thirty days is right now too, right?
No.
Okay, so does that mean after thirty days then?
No, 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 you can't take the action tonight on this.
Right, but I'm saying within thirty days could be our next meeting?
Correct. Twenty seventh, we want to meet and take action on that.
Gotcha, just a question.
Correct. Um, yeah, and I, I do believe.
Within thirty days of today.
Yes. And I would encourage, uh, anyone to, um, you know, it's, it's under New York State Home Rule Law, um, section twenty one. It, um, it is very clear, uh, spells all of that out, so if you want to check any of it, validated. Alderman, uh, Crawford?
I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to say something before I start. Because, uh, I, I kind of expected, but I didn't. I wrote up a bunch of notes back when, not thinking the mayor would do it, but he did it, so. Mayor, you know, October twenty fifth, as stated in this letter, the mayor was asked for his feedback on the C R B. And that was his opportunity to provide his feedback or his personal thoughts. He could defend his police brethren ideals and show his complete support for the views. But then that would expose his bias, so he respectfully declined and remained silent. So you had an opportunity to voice your displeasure with the P L, but he picked what he considered the lesser evil and declined to speak on the topic. And what many of his constituents said that they wanted that night. In his letter, supposedly, there is people, constituents that came to him privately. Of course, usually we'll get a copy of the letter or something, some type of communication that people talk to him, but I guess it was similar to the police reform committee when we had, and I can't remember the exact number, but it was roughly eleven, fifteen letters came in anonymously that were against it. And all the people that were for it all signed their name to it. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone that comes in here and speaks tonight has provided a name and address for the record, but we're not going to take name and address for the record for people to decline. That doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, as far as the morale, I, I, you know, this part I've battled with since I've been on the council. And I, and I don't want to say too much for hurting this city. We have officers that have left, that have cited culture issues within the police department. We have police officers from departments within the police department that have contacted me and thanked me for helping them with trying to get their group back together. Uh, we had a couple of police officers leave over the summer to go work at the county, not because of the C R B, but because they have family that was at work there and the obvious, they want more money. They had another officer that left to go to another county. I mean, that's understandable, it's a county job. I'm just filtering through all my notes here because I wrote down a bunch. We have some that are in the military that would rather go and spend their time on, uh, their reserve time than be here and deal with some of the things they have to deal with here. We have a couple of other officers that have expressed interest lately of leaving to go to the county. We had one that stressed that they didn't like the way the department was run. We have another, and this is a quote, officers have spoken to administrators about being so short-staffed and mandated and the micromanagement. The police culture is that no one would work overtime and still don't want to because of the negative culture within the department. We, we've discussed this in the chamber before about the officers willing to work and not willing to work overtime. Here's a quote from another officer I had. We have some great officers who would love to stay, but until the dirty water is clean, you will contend to have a dirty floor. These aren't my words, these are people that are under your administration. Again, this points to the culture and not the C R B. This letter that we just received from the police officer, I wrote down notes on that one. The first sentence says recruiting and retention problem. Those are the issues along with pay and benefits. Later in the letter, he predates the C R B issues that are mentioned and then turns around and, uh, says, uh, he refers to previous contracts is what he does. And the previous contracts falls on previous administrations kicking the tail down the road. And you've been mayor eight, nine years and Alderman Witt before that. When I came on this council, I said, we should right the ship, and this is my quote, so this is already documented in the minutes. I said, we should right the ship and raise the pay of the police department since the previous administrations failed to do so. They should not, however, get paid the same amount as county and state. The recruitment proof. As the officer stated in this letter about recruitment, when the chief's position was available, I specifically asked when I got on the council, was that job canvassed outside of the city? And I was told yes. I cannot remember exactly who told me that or if it came from the mayor's mouth, but I do recall someone saying yes. I had someone that I knew was qualified apply for the O P D chief position. And they received their reply letter a few days' letters saying that they were not qualified. Reason being, they live outside of the city of Ole. So therefore, that civil service portion was not extended outside of the city of Ole. So only one person qualified, that's our current chief. In two thousand twenty one, when Governor Cuomo created this executive order two oh three, he required local governments to adopt the police reform. It was a requirement. He said in there, there were guidelines and references they didn't want to follow, N A C O, National Association of Civilian Oversight in Law Enforcement, provided the guidelines for the C R B. Membership should reflect and represent the different voices and needs of the community, meaning a board should be as diverse as the community in which it functions. That's a quote from that executive order. So when it came to reform, the reform committee decided on the language of a marginalized community because it was frequently referenced in the executive order. Once it got to the union labor attorneys, it was determined that the language being used would limit the mayor's powers. That was a quote from their letters. When the time came to vote, Alderman suggested that the police or Alderman should be in the C R B. For this very reason, that is why they cannot. So that answers that question there. Uh, the C R B has changed so many times that I've even lost count. So I wouldn't even expect any Alderman to remember the details of the major, what was major for the community versus minor for the council or the mayor or the police department, hence civilian review board. In June of two thousand twenty two, and this is a perfect reason why we need a civilian review board. This June, my phone rang during a council meeting, first time it's ever happened. Only thing that can override that is my wife and my kids, so I knew it was an emergency. I take the call, I come back in, I find out that my mother-in-law was hit by a police officer. So I'm, I'm pissed during this meeting, I no longer want to hear any legislative or anything. At the end of the meeting, I came to the mayor and I said, is there something that happened out in town that should have been addressed to the council? And he said, no. I said, Mayor, my mother-in-law was hit by a police officer. Then the tune changed. When, after discussion, I talked about what was being done to the police officer, meaning if you get into a car accident, you hit someone, blah, 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 are you going in for drug testing, anything? I'm not saying that the police officer was drunk or drinking on the job, I'm saying it's standard policy for anybody. No one in this room can hit anyone and not have to go through some type of testing or something before they can just return back to work. This police officer returned back to work. I had to argue and to try to get something done. I called the state troopers to find out what their policy was, I called Cat County Police to find out what their policy was. When I finally got a chance to talk to the mayor again, he said that they were sending a police officer for testing. That's cool, but I should not have had to do that. If there was a C R B and this had happened, we're not looking to punish the police officer. This is a perfect opportunity for them to create a policy to, do we have one yet, Mayor?
I'll defer to the chief.
Chief, please.
Well, he said multiple things that aren't accurate.
Okay, but I just asked you one question. He was tested that night, I said he was. But do we have a policy now?
He said multiple things that are not accurate, okay?
Oh, I know what happened in my mind, but I want to know the one thing, that's the only thing, chief, is do we have a policy now in place?
Yes.
Yes, so we have a policy. So is that something the council can see? We can get, okay. So now that, but now that there is a policy, that is something that a C R B could have helped with. That it's, for some reason, there is this stigma that people seem to feel like this is coming to hurt them. No one's attacking the Oleane Police Department, no one is doing anything to them. The recruitment issues, the, the, the issues that they're having with, uh, their management, the culture, that is beyond a C R B. That all predates the C R B being talked about. These guys want more money, understandable, I don't blame them, with the things that they have to deal with, I'd want more money too. The only way they're going to get that is through the county and through the state. If you want to stay here in Oleane, you gotta want to stay here, it's as simple as that. But in order to bring people here, we need to canvass outside of Oleane. Everyone graduating aren't coming out of there going, hey, I want to be a police officer. You might get one percent, if that. So recruitment is a big part of it, a huge part of it. But to say that it's because of this here, this legislation, no, that was a cop out. That was a cop out, it's frivolous claim and I don't believe at all. And those quotes that I mentioned, those were from Oleane police officers.
Okay, uh, anything else?
Okay, I just have one question. Bernie mentioned that this was an over executive order, passed by Governor Cuomo. Uh, so is this a state law? Excuse my naivety, is this, is this a state law that each municipality across the state has to have one of these committees?
No.
No. See, I thought it was, that's why I didn't, I didn't know.
Any, uh, comments? Alderman Gonzalez?
So I'm assuming we're probably going to want to talk about this again, right? And obviously, there's a lot to digest here in terms of, you know, some of the reasons that are given for the notice of disapproval and, you know what I mean? Just want to gather, like, my thoughts on that, but I'm assuming we're probably going to want to talk about this on the twenty seventh?
Probably.
Okay, so, um, just initially, my, my, my gut reaction to this is, um, one thing that, that just jumps off the page to me is that, uh, in the last paragraph that, that where it says it has become punitive in nature rather than supportive. Um, my, my only concern, and this isn't a question, I don't expect a response, I'm just stating this, that I think that it's funny because we literally spent months, a year, I don't know, eighteen months? How long did we work on this with the city attorney, with the, with the, the union attorney, paring this down to, you know what I mean, a, a workable draft? We, we were admonished by people in the audience saying that this thing didn't have enough teeth, that it was toothless, which is everyone's favorite expression, but, you know, now it's punitive, I don't know, it just, just comes off like disingenuous, I don't know. Like, it, it, it's almost like because it exists, that's the problem, there's no compromise. So I feel like that's all we've done is compromise. And that's cool, like, you know, all I want it to be is this, a method for people to file complaints and that doesn't just go to the mayor, you know what I mean? But, I don't know.
Okay, anyone else? Anything further, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, municipal communications?
Uh, none.
Uh, city official reports?
The monthly reporter, the city auditor, Monday, November, two thousand twenty two.
Uh, proposed legislation and referrals?
P L number one twenty one dash twenty two by Mayor Galio has been pulled.
No, it isn't.
No. And one twenty one twenty two is the boost business grant program.
Oh, I'm sorry. P L number one twenty one dash twenty two by Mayor Galio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President. P L one twenty two dash twenty two by Mayor Galio, referred to the Committee of the Whole December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President. P L one twenty three dash twenty two by Mayor Galio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President. P L number one twenty four dash twenty two by Mayor Galio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President. P L number one twenty five dash twenty two by Mayor Galio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President. P L number one twenty six by Mayor Galio, referred to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two by Council President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Um, before we jump into public comment, um, although I remember P L have already made statements, I would open it up to any other statements that you would like to make at this time. Alderman Robinson?
Sorry. I have one question, uh, I had, uh, someone get ahold of me about the trail and the dog feces. So their quick solution because they know no one's going to enforce it, right, is to put up signs. So wanted to see if that was something that we could do.
I didn't hear what his dog.
Maybe to put up sign, dog signs, like, clean up your poop signs.
On the trail?
On the trail.
Oh.
Along the, uh, residential aspects, so from Constitution to Washington, Washington to state, state to Henley.
And we have, uh, we have individuals that observe, you know, we do have a local law, we do have a hog that they have to clean up after themselves, so.
These people have been warned, there are new residents that are in the area, they've been warned and their answer, their quick answer was, is biodegradable.
If you want to work with the police chief, they'll, they'll talk to him, but the signs, we can look in the signage.
Okay. Thank you. Well, you know what? On that topic, um, Robert, how are you?
Thank you.
Uh, how are you? Um, did we, you, you've given us an update about at the dog park? And just because we've had such nice weather, uh, recently, when we're getting bags or, or garbage just bins up there, have things been put up there, you know?
I believe it came in on Friday.
Okay.
We got the picnic tables also, but don't think they're up there yet.
Okay.
They may be, but I don't think they did get them in, uh, they'd be up here anytime now.
Okay, all right, just wondered, and they're, they're also spring.
So speaking of the dogs and walking on the trail, would it behoove us to put up one of those, um, like, is it with the dog bags, right, that somebody could take if they don't have them?
I mean, that, that would be, that'd be really cool, especially on that section between Washington and West State Street, right? Um, because if anybody that has a. Um, because if anybody that has a dog and you walk around carrying their bag, it would be nice if they're, but then somebody's got to take care of it, so that would be for. Then somebody from parks has to empty it and, and clean it and all that kind of stuff, but. It's a neat idea, I don't know what the mayor would. More maintenance. I mean, one, one of the, and I have seen Mayor, uh, kudos, uh, that we have, I've seen more garbage disposal, bins being placed out. Um, I can remember a while back, like the garbage bins were disappearing because people were dumping their own personal garbage in there and.
Well, the bins along Union Street, we've taken out the recycle one, and there's just a bigger bin in there now, so that's handling uh, the, the trash. But we do have a, we still have an issue with people using, you know, putting their household garbage in there and. So it's, it's a maintenance issue, but uh, you know, we could, I, I'd rather, my first thought would be, I'd rather put signs up that you're responsible for your own. Dogs and take, take it with you, most people will, most people carry bags with them, you know, they'll dispose of it. But you get the few that won't, you know, and I wonder how many dogs are, are stray. Uh, you know, too, but in your case, Alderman Robinson, will you know who the person is, like, like the chief, know him now, I'll never talk to them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Speaking of the trail, this just popped in my head, but I saw something on social media a while back about a petition regarding the trail maintenance in the winter. Is that, does any, have you received a petition or has there been any uh?
Yes, I've received a petition, uh, and uh, my last conversation with a, a person who organized it was former director Bob Ring. Uh, he's going to take the petition to, uh, to the other entities that, you know, the town of Olean. The uh, town of Allegheny and Saint Bonaventure University and J C C, and then we'll have a, well, once he says that. Uh, then we'll have a meeting, uh, to decide, uh, if we're gonna, you know, do the, if we're gonna do maintenance on the trail or not.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, will you read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views. Voice their concerns or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, at this time, I will invite any members of the community to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. Anyone? Anyone? Anyone, all right, at this time, I will call public comment closed on the finance and bills.
None.
How about resolutions?
Resolution number one seventeen dash twenty-two, P L number one nineteen dash twenty-two has been pulled, correct. Resolution one twenty, I'm sorry, resolution one twenty dash twenty-two, P L number one twenty-one dash twenty-two. Out of committee by McCall, seconded by Robinson. To approve boost business grant real estate assistance program applications. For financial assistance.
All right, we discussed this previously, any comments, questions, same number, the clerk please call the wall.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Uh, I abstain from my previous relationship with the small business development side.
It's approved. Six ayes, one exception. Resolution number one twenty-two dash twenty-two, P L number one twenty-two dash twenty-two, out of committee, uh, Alderman Witt. Seconded by Anastasia. To authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Olean and the state of New York in connection with funding available. Under New York State Department of Transportation accelerated transit capital assistance program. For eligible projects for the Olean area transit system.
All right, and just, just uh, maybe my ear is covered wrong, I just want to make sure, like, it's resolution one twenty-one dash twenty-two, P L one twenty-two dash twenty-two. Okay, any comments, questions on this one, same number, the clerk please call the wall.
Wait a minute, John. One twenty-one dash twenty-two?
I have it, I have it on mine as resolution one twenty-one dash twenty-two. P L is one twenty-two. It's P L one twenty-two, that is resolution one number one. Okay. Correct.
Did we skip one or did I fall asleep for a minute?
We skipped one.
Post.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for asking questions, any, any other questions? All right, well, clerk, please call the wall.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number one twenty-two dash twenty-two, P L number one twenty-three dash twenty-two. Out of committee by Anastasia, seconded by Gonzalez. To authorize the purchase of a vehicle for use by the city of Olean. H V A C specialist in accordance with section two dash two thirty-one. Subparagraph two of the city of Olean code of ordinances procurement policy. And to authorize the transfer of funds associated with said purchase.
Okay, any comments, questions? Same number, the clerk please call the wall.
Alderman Witt?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number one twenty-three dash twenty-two, P L number one twenty-four dash twenty-two. Out of committee by Alderman Witt. Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. To authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Raymond E. Kelly Incorporated. For the construction of a facade pedestrian, single passage, safety tunnel in accordance. With section two dash two thirty-one, subparagraph two of the city of Olean code of ordinances. And to authorize the transfer of six thousand four hundred twenty dollars from general fund. Contingency line, item three six two oh dot four five five for costs associated with said construction agreement.
All right, we discussed this one too, I, I just want to throw out a quick, uh, just, I guess, point or comment to, uh, to. Uh, to the fire chief and the police chief, um, with putting up the scaffolding and, and that barrier there. Um, I'm, I'm sure you guys are well aware, I've seen a number of, uh, some, some homeless people camping out in that hole. You know, place in, in chains, um, and they, you know, I don't know if that barrier is going to blockade that and, uh, I'm hoping maybe it blockades it so they. Can't get back there and, and set up a.
Residence.
Residence, yes, uh, uh, so you know, hopefully, they, they're able to do that. Because I, I have seen a number of that, uh, and some questionable activity going on, so just passing that along. All right, um, sorry about that, Mr. Clerk, uh, any comments, questions on this? Same number, the clerk please call the wall.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one twenty-four dash twenty-two, P L number one twenty-five dash twenty-two. Out of committee by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alderwoman McCall. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund contingency to line item three six two oh point four five five.
Okay, any comments, same number, the clerk please call the wall.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, uh, thank you all, anything before we adjourn?
Alderman Gonzalez. Not letting you off the hook. Quick question for the mayor, fire pits status is the latest on that.
The latest on that is we've, uh, we've, uh, been waiting for one other company to give us a bid on the, uh, I guess I thought the cages were going to go. Uh, if we don't get that bid, um, we'll be, uh, we'll be, uh, moving forward with the prices that we have now.
Cages, who's that name?
Well, right now it has a flat cover, okay, and to use them, people would have to remove that flat cover. And then. Put it somewhere and then somebody would have to put it back on. We've got, we want mesh cages that will be built around them, it'll be up, it'll be mesh, uh, and then they'll have a top on it. So that when it snows and stuff, it won't, uh, you know, just, if they leave off those things, it'll, you know, cook monkey with the inner workings. Uh, and, and it would be unsafe too, because the, when we tested the flames, they were wired.
Okay.
So also with the inside of these cages will be, uh, ceramic. Ceramic blocks that will diffuse the flame too.
So there's nothing stopping the people from just grabbing that cover and running off of it?
No.
Okay, yeah, that's, you wanted, yeah.
They'll be bolted down.
Okay, what's that?
They'll be, the new ones will be bolted down.
Okay.
But it'll also stop children from sticking their hand in there.
Right.
Will there be a marginal dispenser? That would be, um, any other, any other lights, Mayor?
The lights?
Yes.
Uh, we're having, uh, we're having problems with the, with the lights, uh, the, uh. The devices that were designed to go into the poles, uh, came in, they were too big. So we're working with Andy Martin and that to see what else we can do there. It's, it's been a disappointment, I thought we'd have them up high, you know, by the parade, it's been a disappointment.
That's too bad, okay. Same number, any other motion, go adjourn, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor, I oppose, we appear connected.